Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Township's Board Business Meeting. We just got through with a study session that went a couple of minutes along. And we're going to start our meeting with a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I thought we had a very good study session, a lot of good discussion on the topic of the hiring process by the township. Additions, deletions, do we have any? Joe, did you?
Oh, no.
Did you want to keep that on?
Well, yeah, I'd like to make a, yeah, I still like to keep that on.
Okay, okay. So, anybody else? Okay, seeing none. I'd like a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve?
Support.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. No adjustments, so we'll go through this. No presentations, public comment on agenda items. Okay, all right. Yes, Mr. Flavin. Hello.
Kevin Flavin, Park Lane, Grozil. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Porcelli, trustee Porcelli, for bringing up the issue of how we choose people to fill the jobs in the community. So, the item is, my understanding is there's a closed session document that we're looking for, and that's what the?
That's what the action item is.
Okay, the action is, item is closed session document. I think that the public should see what the document has to say, what our attorneys, township attorneys have to say about how the hiring process takes place. From what I heard during the study session, it seems that some folks have a misunderstanding of what the Open Meetings Act says. And my understanding, and if the public reads it, the Open Meetings Act says you cannot deliberate, make a decision about a hiring process, or a hiring, hiring somebody that's not open to the public. So, for instance, then the Police Commission, or even, let's do the Fire Commission. The committee was set up by, I believe you, Mr. Budney. No, it was not. And Mr. Thiel made the decision to do a committee by himself without your direction at all.
No, 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 I didn't put the committee together.
No, I'm asking you, did you suggest?
Yes, because that's our hiring practice.
Okay, so you did.
That is our hiring practice.
In the past, well, let's do it this way.
But, go ahead, because we're not going to talk about it, you just make your comment.
The bottom line is, that committee that you set up, four people, made a decision, is that correct? Please stop me if I'm not?
Well, I, no, because we're not going to discuss it, you just make your comments.
What I'm saying is that it did not follow the Open Meetings Act.
Yeah, it did.
It did not. It did not. We have a letter, the Grozil Taxpayer Association has a letter that says you did not follow the spirit, at least the spirit of the law, about the Open Meetings Act. Everything that you did with that committee did not follow the spirit of open meetings and being more transparent and more open. It closed, it closed the system to less participate, less participation by the township community, and it was a political decision by you to narrow it down so that you could make, possibly, maybe, you could make a choice of who you wanted to eliminate.
Oh, Mr. Flavin, please, stop that kind of crap. That is crap to say that. You have no basis to say that I would influence anything. All I did was say, Derek, take it, you put it together, you do what you want. We'll get into it when we vote. Do not try and impugn me with your discussion, okay? If you, if you have something, that's fine. But you're talking around and making comments like that are absolutely improper.
Tell me exactly what you, what is?
Mister, your time is running, so just continue on.
You have taken my time.
I have not taken your time.
You just did, you, you had a discussion with me, you've opened it up to discussion.
No, I have not opened it to discussion, I'm just not going to sit here and take your crap.
Mister Budney, that's why you have decided to have no comment. It used to be that the comment for the public was after the township supervisor finished. You at a meeting said, "I want the last word." You said that.
No, I didn't.
People heard it, people heard it, I have a list of people that I can vouch for that. So, you've taken my time.
You have ten seconds.
You have taken my time, I will stand here until I have my time made up that you took from me.
Okay, I'll give you an extra twenty seconds.
You took a committee that was open to the public, you narrowed it down. You have, you have given this to Mr. Thiel, he is, he's an at-will employee, so you can vote him out, you have four members of the board here that can vote him out. If he doesn't do what you say, his job is in jeopardy. So, you have, you have the power to make him to do that. I'm sorry that you, that you don't see this. The bottom line, back to it, is you didn't follow the Open Meetings Act. You've made decisions, they made decisions, the committee made decisions.
Your time is up, that's fine.
The committee made decisions without following the Open Meetings Act. Maybe you should have somebody come in, maybe you should have somebody come in.
Your time is up, Mister Flavin.
Maybe you should have somebody come in from the Attorney General's office to teach.
Consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve Consent Agenda 23-034, which consists of the minutes of the June 12th, 2023 regular meeting, minutes of the June 12th, 2023 closed session, check registers dated through June 16th, 2023, and downtown development authority appointment.
Mr. Supervisor, I'll make a second on that.
Okay, thank you.
And I have one correction to the minutes. The minutes of the Township Board of Trustees meeting for Monday, June 12th, 2023 states on page one, "Closed Session: Discussion of Information Pursuant to Statute." In the second line, it indicates "Information Pursuant to", and that should be pursuant to MCL 15.268, perin, e, perin.
Okay, do you have that?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
I need the list of consent agenda items. The list from your pack.
Oh, that's the same thing as a copy.
No. That's in the four of them.
Yeah. Yeah, just four.
Any other comment on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve Consent Agenda 23-034, which is made up of the minutes of the June 12th, 2023 regular meeting, the minutes of the June 12th, 2023 closed session, as amended with Mr. Blitzer's statement, the check register dated through June 16th, 2023, and downtown development authority appointment. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. All right. Action items. David, if you would, please.
Thank you. Based upon a recommendation from the Grozil DPS Commission and the Grozil Township Engineers, the Grozil Township Board hereby approves a bid from GV Cement Contracting Company at a total bid award amount of $989,950 plus a 10% contingency.
Support? Comment?
Just one quick comment that I have, under the road project budget portion, the 864, 769 item considered under this action item, that's incorrect. The item considered under this action item is that million dollars listed under Concrete Work at the bottom of page 29 of 44.
So, this came in a little under the original budgeted amount. And I just want to read off, just for people watching. This concrete work includes some sectioning and some jointing, and the streets that will be touched. And I'm just going to read them off, Gray's Drive, Cadillac Circle, Revard Court, Cadillac Court, Glengarry, Hampton, Berkshire, Park Lane, south of Church, Woodcrest, O'Donnell, Park Lane between Gray's and LaSalle Court, Manchester Boulevard, Country Club Lane, Calm Meadow Court, Calm Meadow Court, and intersections at Park Lane and Parkway, Parkway and Turntable Court, Parkway and Old Depot, and Park Lane between Parkway and McComb. So, those are the roads, intersections that are currently on our, our list, or until we run out of concrete money.
Other, other comments? Hearing none, we have a motion based upon the recommendation of the Grozil DPS Commission and the Grozil Township Engineers that the Grozil Township Board hereby approves a bid from GV Cement Contracting Company at a total bid award of $989,950 plus a 10% contingency. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will get some concrete work done. Our roadwork is, is moving along. If, I'm sure everybody's seen, they've been out there doing all kinds of things, so the, the program is, is going along fine.
Could I just make a quick comment while we're on roads? You were, you're talking about, everyone can see about the roads. There are some areas where the milling has been done, where the cutoff is really steep. There, in some of them, there's like a little, you know, they've done like a little scoop up into there. I've heard neighbors complain, especially down at Swan Island. It's particularly bad. If you would just be able to mention it to the crews, if they're not about to already pave, to maybe ease up on some of those.
And I think the problem there is when they're out milling, they're milling, they don't have, they don't have the asphalt to do it. If they do, I mean, we did Meridian and, Meridian and Bellevue today, and they had a little, but.
Yeah.
It's hard.
There are two different crews, one doing milling and one doing paving, so the mill moves ahead of the, of the paving. And unfortunately, they can mill in poor weather, or fortunately, they can mill in poor weather, but they can't pave in, in poor weather, so. So, point well taken, just drive very carefully on it. And I think the state standard allows three or four days to have it milled out before you pave it, so we're within that window.
Well, I mean, we're all glad it's happening, but, you know, if they know that you're on the township board and the roads are being worked on, they come to you, and it's good that people understand, because I, you know, that it's a two-part deal, so thank you for clarifying that, and thank you for letting me.
Not a problem. David?
Okay.
Action item number two.
I'd like to make a motion based upon a recommendation from the Grozil Township Engineers and the Grozil Township Department of Public Services Commission that the Grozil Township Board approves the award of a contract to Monroe Plumbing and Heating Company for the installation of HVAC equipment at the Grozil Wastewater Treatment Plant at a price of $722,250 plus a 25% contingency for a total expenditure of $902,812.50.
Second. Thank you, Joe.
This is, we received one bid. There was, so this was the, but the price was below the engineer's estimate, and there's, the reason for the higher contingency is there are some, some unknown factors if we need to do additional steel work, because we're putting in larger units on the roof, and we may need to build up some support for those. And, hmm. That's, I guess that's it, is there anything else there?
Yeah, and one other point about the higher contingency, this is what we consider a, a design, I'm sorry, a bid build, not a design build, so, for example, at a normal project, like this roads project, the engineers will put together a specification, they'll bid that exact specification, and contractors will put prices in on the project based upon that design. In this one, it's a, it's a bid build, so it's, it's more of a, a relationship and agreement between a contractor and the engineer and the township, where we all kind of work together to, to, to design and build this project as a, as a group, which is often seen on, on more complex projects, maybe, that involve, you know, contractors that have more experience with these type of projects than even our engineers do. So, you want to have the flexibility to be able to honor any kind of issues that might come up as they do actually the build, which is, normally results in a higher contingency, so. And that saves us on engineering in the beginning, but also generally leads to a better project on those projects that are very specified or very technical in nature, like an HVAC system for a wastewater treatment plant, so just a little bit more information on that.
Any other comment? Okay. So, based upon a recommendation of the Grozil Township Engineers and the Grozil Township Department of Public Service Commission, the Grozil Township Board approve the award of a contract to Monroe Plumbing and Heating Company for the installation of an HVAC equipment at the Grozil Wastewater Treatment Plant at a price of $722,250 plus a 25% contingency. Total authorization, $902,812.50. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? We can finally, that has been a problem for years over there. Hopefully, this finally takes care of it.
Yep, and this is more than just heating and air conditioning, this is air handling and air circulation for the entire plant, so the air is very thick and caustic.
Acid, very toxic.
It's very toxic, so getting an exchange of air throughout the plant is very important, not only for the healthy of the operators there, but also the, the reliability and, and life of the equipment. It reduces corrosion and things of that sort, so.
Okay. Thank you. Joe?
Okay, excuse me. Asking to approve a closed session document to be made public.
Support.
The township attorney gave a written opinion in a closed session regarding our hiring practice using a subcommittee with the interview not in an open meeting. I need this document to prepare for the upcoming study session, that's when I put this on, which we had today, but I still would like this to be made public so I could have the document. I realize the study session was before this meeting, I get that, it's, but that was the, the whole issue.
Yeah. Comments? Questions?
I'll just, I'll say personally, I don't have any problem with making the document public. I don't think, yeah, I'll just say that, I'll be voting for this.
Okay. Carl? I mean, you look like you had a comment.
Yeah, I do. Two points, number one, there are three matters of privilege that are widely respected in, in law. One is the clergy parishioner privilege. Second is the doctor-patient privilege. And the third is the attorney-client privilege. Absent some violation of law, which means you're attempting to cover up a crime or you're conspiring to enter into a criminal act, those privileges are inviolate. I am concerned that if we begin to pick and choose as to what items we're going to have put out there that will waive that privilege, where does that end? I don't know that it's necessarily the camel's nose in the tent, but I have great concern that once we start making those decisions, then the next question becomes, well, you did it last month in June, why aren't you doing it in July? Why aren't you doing it in August, you've done this before? Aside from that, I don't think, respectfully to Joe and to Kyle and David, who seconded the motion, that this goes in the direction toward what our study session was focused on, and that was making a better product during our interview access, our interview process. I don't see where that necessarily accomplishes that. I would like to see what this board can come up with in terms of a hiring process that maybe addresses these things, and in such a manner, well, we're not going to be waiving a privilege. And for that reason, I'm going to be voting against it, because I don't think it goes in the direction where we really want to be, and that is a better hiring process.
Thank you, Carl. Anyone else?
I, I just want to say, I agree with Kyle, or Carl, this is a slippery slope if we, there's a reason that things are handled in closed session, and I don't think that, that we should start a practice of allowing that.
Uda, do you have any?
Yeah. This is a complicated issue, there's no easy answer. I do not like the idea of just coming out and, as you say, making public things that were shared in a client attorney privilege. On the other hand, this particular opinion, which I'm assuming, and I need clarification, is the opinion of the attorney saying that we followed the intent of the law with the Open Meetings Act. Given the fact that there are so many aspersions made and so many insinuations made, I respect what our attorney told us, I have no, I have really no objection with the public knowing what our attorney said and understanding where we stand. On the other hand, I, I have to also consider what Carl and Dave just said about a slippery slope. On the other hand, the third hand, you know, the one that's back here somewhere, as a board, we've been asked to do this, and so we have the option to say yes or no. So, it, I don't think the slope is quite as slippery, maybe, as we think. So, you know, it's, I think what frustrates me is that this has become a, kind of a political football, and it's being used to embarrass the board. We have not ever seen any documents refuting. We always hear names, I have, I have a letter, I have an opinion, I have this, and I have faith in what our attorney told us, so it's hard to say no when I want the public to know that our attorney gave a very good, and I think, solid opinion, so I, I'm going to go on the side and say, make this public and let the public know that we have a solid opinion from our attorney and that we stand on solid ground with what we are doing. And then continue to move forward to improve and build the trust in our hiring process. So, that's what I have to say.
Jim, I have one more point I'd like to make on this, and that is that the document is from the attorney to the board. I don't know if anybody's asked the attorney if she has any objections to releasing it.
You can ask her, I guess, I mean, but doesn't, the board, it's the board's decision, believe me, I checked this.
I would like, I, I appreciate your position, but I'd like to know what the attorney has to say.
I'm not concerned, that's why I'm asking tonight, and if you don't want to.
Derek, you want to answer that question?
Yeah, I can speak to that real briefly, I did get a phone call from the attorney earlier today. She was inquiring as to what this item was regarding on the agenda. She did express that this was an opinion provided to the board with the expectation that it was an opinion for the board. She also expressed that in the future, if there is the, an issue where these items, these opinions might become public, then, you know, it will impact the way that she writes her opinions. So, just, that, that's the conversation I had earlier.
May I just clarify something, too? This, this opinion, the reason why I need this opinion is because, obviously, you know what my opinion is. I'm still not convinced that she's correct in it, that's all, that's just my opinion, not anybody else's, maybe, maybe some, maybe not. It would be absolutely impossible for me then to check her opinion without it. This was done, we have numerous opinions given to us by the township attorney that's not in a closed session, numerous, and they are open opinions, you can FOIA it. This was done out of convenience, because we had two other opinions that night in there, so this was a third one that went. There was no viable reason for this to be secret. This was an opinion that we're going to use in a hiring process that is an open and transparent process. So, does it make sense, let me just kind of explain it this term. Does it make sense to keep a document in a closed session that had no viable reason to be closed, continue it to be closed, when it has to do with an open, transparent policy that we have? It just doesn't make sense to me. So, I guess if, if it's voted down, it's voted down, and I, I'm not sure what my next move is, but I want to make sure we're not doing something wrong. If we get these ambiguity in our different opinions, and, and I know some don't think it's an opinion, but let's just say what we have, I want to make sure we're doing it right, because what does that leave me then? And, and I seem to be the one, I guess, pushing this, I get it, but without this document in front of me, what does that leave me to do then? How can I see if this is a correct opinion? It's probably not going to be good.
What I would, what I would respond with on that and suggest to that is that if, so that we have a level understanding, if you have an attorney out there that can tell you, do in a memo form, saying, hey, John Doe, Jane Smith, these are the facts as I understand them. Does this process violate the Open Meeting Act? You can ask them for an opinion.
But I don't know their process, I don't, I don't recall verbatim her, her opinion.
Well, but it, it doesn't, it doesn't matter, because what, what you're asking for is what is, is our process violative of the Open Meeting Act?
And we did that.
Wherein, hear me out, wherein we, the township board, not we, but the township board, did A, B, C, D, E, F, and get an opinion on that basis.
I got two verbal opinions on that basis, and one written opinion.
I'm not interested.
These gentlemen got one written opinion by an attorney that has vast knowledge. We're not going to debate the opinion, my question tonight is, can this document, that is a private document, and I did it the right way, I could have simply took a picture of that document, sent it out and got it privately, but that's not me. I want to do it right. Right is, you tell me it's public, and then I can take that opinion and see if we are doing the correct thing, that's all, Carl, I'm asking, I'm not, so, I can't do anything, because I want to do it the right way. I want to do it the legal way, the correct way.
And, and my point on that is, if you're going to be asking a question, I've had clients that have told me, I've checked this out with, and it's how the facts are displayed, how they're laid out there, how they are in fact presented, whether all of the facts are present or not. I'm not suggesting you're trying to shave it or, or get a certain result, but what I'm saying, in order to compare apples with apples, if you have Jane Doe say, "Based on what you've told me," then that is violative of the Open Meetings Act.
That's still not apples to apples, Carl, apples to apples, would give me this document that she said, and I'm going to give it to the attorney. that she said, and I'm going to give it to the attorney, Uta. Uta's going to then give me an opinion on this document that she said, our attorney. That's apples to apples. That is 100% apples to apples.
I'm sorry. Kyle?
I know. I saw your hand, Uta, too. Do you want to go first?
Oh.
Well, you might, you might say something nicer. Better than I would say.
I'm sorry to step in here, but Joe, I don't know if you heard. So first I heard possibly three votes in favor of what you want here, so I haven't heard Jim yet, but I'm just telling you, that's what I, I heard. So you're close there. The, I know she might go the other way now, but, but the, what I was going to say on this specific thing was, Derek, that's the first information I heard on that. I know I asked you about this previously. I didn't hear, though, from you, any concerns about the attorney, from the attorney, about releasing this publicly. I don't feel like she felt, I don't know. That's what I heard from you, and that's what I felt earlier. I, I would possibly propose a compromise of going back to the attorney and saying, if this were to be released, would there be any issues? Because I don't know if we have that information yet. But anyway, I just, I just wanted to find a way forward or whatever.
We're close.
Yeah.
Can, can I modify your, your, so I'm wondering, wouldn't it just make sense for us to ask our attorney to give us an opinion for public consumption? What she told us as the board, can she write this opinion for public consumption?
The same?
Oh, I'm sorry. The same one you're asking him?
Yes, but, but, you know, we...
Same question, considering the process.
Considering the process, answering the same question, but for public consumption. So that then we don't have this issue of breaking privilege. We don't have the slippery slope, and we have, we have a document that we can release to the public. And Joe, what I think Carl is asking is simply talk to the attorneys you've been talking to and get them to answer your question. The same question we're asking Kristen. Ask them to answer that same question for you.
In writing, in writing.
It doesn't need, they, we don't want a comparison and contrast. We want their opinion.
But their opinion reading this opinion would be, that's how they wanted it. That was perfect.
I don't, I don't, I don't approve of us releasing a privileged document so that it can be torn apart by somebody else. That's not, that's not what I'm voting for.
Right. I get it. But that's our attorney's opinion. What, I mean, I guess I'm confused.
That's the opinion of the township attorney on a specific item.
I get that. But there was, the reason we had it in a closed session, it was convenient that night. We, he would have got, ask Derek if he would have got this opinion if we had no, would it have been in a closed session? Would it always have been in a closed session?
I think that to Uta's point and to your point, I think that this probably would have been an opinion that could have been distribute, distributed outside of
That's correct.
a closed session. But to Uta's point, I think that the format, the verbiage, all the information that was included in here might have been a bit, worded a bit different if it was for public consumption. So I think, to your point, a compromise, allow her to come back with a document that is, it's not going to be a different opinion, but it might be stated in different ways.
That confused me, Uta, that she'd be giving a different opinion.
No, no.
Not a different opinion.
But if she has reservations, having created a document for us, that she would then consider writing other documents differently because we might make them public, that gives me pause. So I think she will give us the same opinion,
I don't like that.
but written for public consumption.
That's not, yeah.
And then you ask your attorneys or your advisors for the same, give me an opinion on the same question, and then make that available to us as well, and then we can compare the two.
Well, okay.
We don't, we don't hack one, one apart or the other. We won't judge your attorney. We will just read it and say, this is what that is.
This is what I would like, if we can do this. If we can just stick to what my motion is, and then I'll move on from there.
Okay.
Well, go ahead, Jim, sir.
My action item would ask to make a private document public. And if you guys don't feel it, then you vote no. I get it. If you feel it's okay, yes. If it's no, then I'm going to go, I have to go a different route. So I, I don't believe in the route about the attorney writing something different, because that makes me a little...
You're, you're, you're hearing the word different.
I'm a little suspicious, nervous, whatever the word is. I don't know what the correct word is. But I'd rather, let's just vote on it tonight, and if you don't feel it, you don't feel it. If you feel for it tonight, you vote yes. If you don't, I get it. I get it.
And, and I, and my, my problem with it is, is the fact that it's a closed session, it's confidential, and, and it is a slippery slope that we'd be going down where every, every closed session, everything we get in closed session, okay, somebody decides the next day, you know what, I want to, I want to turn that out to my group to, to, to look at and, and, and go through. I see, I, I really see nothing that can be done other than to criticize the opinion that she wrote. That's the, you know, that's the only good of it, because the law is there, and, and, and any of us could go and get an opinion from an attorney that looks at the law, and you give them the, the facts. Those aren't hidden. The facts are the facts. Here's the facts. He writes that out, and he says, here's my opinion. You did or you didn't. And, and how? And he's going to, you know, excuse me, indicate that. And then you can see if he's, he's doing the same thing, apples to apples. So I, I just don't believe that it, it's good for us to take closed material and open it up, because we're, we're now opening ourselves up to, to everything, plus the fact that even, you know, with, with the attorneys, well, wait a minute, is this going to be open or closed? I'm going to watch what I say. I'm not going to be as open with you, or whatever, because it's, it's closed. I, you know...
I'm very concerned about the chilling effect.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And that's my, that's my problem with it. Because I think, Joe, you can go to your people and get an opinion, because you have the facts. You know what was done. You know what we did.
I did go to my, and I did get an opinion.
And so get a written, get a written opinion.
They won't, you know that. It's, then it's moot. It was not moot. The MTA says it's this.
They won't sign their name to it. It doesn't count.
You still have to look at it. We got an opinion. Now I just simply, look, let's stop with this. Let's vote.
Well, so, let's vote. Okay.
Last thing. So, I'm going to vote in favor of opening this. Sounds like we're going to lose on this show. I just want to state that I, I know you want to leave it there, but after this, I do want to propose an action item that we ask the attorney to create an opinion for.
But you don't, you won't have to do that. We'll just do it.
Okay. Well, I just, I don't know.
I was, I was actually going to suggest the same thing.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to get it on record coming out of this.
No, we can just do it. We don't have to have a action item.
Let's just, let's just vote.
So, so on this, if there's no more comment, on this action item, we have a motion to approve a closed session document to be made public. Joe, would you like a roll call vote on this, or?
That's not necessary.
Okay. All, all in favor of making it public?
Yes. Aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Yeah. So we have, so just to be clear, we had four nays and two, two ayes.
But, Mr. Supervisor, with all due respect, I would like to make a motion so that we are on record as asking for an opinion on the very same question from the very same attorney, just written in such a way that it can be made public. I don't think it's going to be anything. Thank you. I got support. I don't think she's going to write anything different.
You didn't make the motion yet.
I did.
You said, I'd like to. So do you want to make a motion?
I am making the motion.
Okay, thank you.
That we request the attorney write a public opinion on the very same question that we put before her for the, for the private opinion.
Okay.
Support.
And support by Kyle?
Yep. And I, I just think that she will probably be writing us the same opinion, but she will know it's written for public opinion, for public. I don't think it's going to be different, Joe. All right, vote. Sorry.
Are you, are you done?
I'm done, sir. Yes.
Okay. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
None?
One.
One. One, okay. So that was a five, five, one. And Joe, will, you know, you'll get it, and you go, you know, you do what you need to do, and this will be available.
Understood. Understood.
All right. That was the last action item. So next, next we have a public comment. Brian, I'm going to start with you.
I have a...
Okay. Mr. Flavin, we'll, let's do this again. Let's try this again. Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Kevin Flavin, Park Lane. Mr. Budney, at the last township board meeting, you said that the township and Wayne County officials were going to meet to discuss the Wayne County, County's maintenance plan for the Parkway Bridge, and I'm wondering if that meeting took place. And if so, does Wayne County official, do Wayne County officials believe the Parkway Bridge can operate for another 20 to 30 years as they suggested? And if an additional maintenance, or, and if additional maintenance work must be done, do Wayne County's officials still believe those repairs can be done without another long-term closure of the Parkway Bridge to vehicle traffic? I think that it's been some time since we've heard from them, and it would be nice to know that there won't, as they suggested, that there wouldn't be a long-term closure. And a follow-up to my earlier comments, police or policies and procedures are there to protect the township and guide those that work for the township. Not following policies and procedures will lead to costly litigation, as we have seen with the police commission and back in 2000, I believe it was 17. The former board did not follow, or it appears that they did not follow, policy or procedure 6710, and they bypassed this, bypassed it. Currently, policies, the process in government is just as important as the product in government. And I heard a couple supervisors and treasurer, I heard some of the groups saying that it's more important, even though the, the process was messy, that we got to the product. And what I'm saying is, there are policies and procedures and laws that must be followed to get to the product. So if you don't follow the law, that, that's a problem. And I'm, I'm, again, saying that I'm glad that Mr. Porzarelli asked for clarification on what, what we're doing, and whether we, you, the board, is following the law. And lastly, we did send a letter that is open to the public that Grozeil Taxpayer Association was, it was Frank, from Frank Kuzumano, and he pointed out where he felt that the township was not following policies and procedures and the Open Meetings Act. I would like you to go to the, or may I suggest that the board go to the Attorney General and ask for their opinion on whether you're following the Open Meetings Act. I think that would go a long way to helping taxpayers and residents know that their board is doing, playing straight and working within the law. And I would also like, and may I suggest, that we put the community, the final comment back to the end of the meeting so that the public can respond to what you have to say after, instead of having this now, have it at the end where we can comment on your opinion. And I see you making notes, and I appreciate that. I think it is disrespectful to the community not to be able to speak up. And you always have the option, as the supervisor, to make a comment after they're done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flavin. Anyone else? Bob? Mr. Velasco is making his way.
Budney, I have arrived. Thank you for that intro. Bob Z. Blavell. On the last vote, that subject, I heard some things that were said, and I'll be honest with you. If my attorney has to change the verbiage, the nouns, the adjectives, and so on and so forth, to present it to the public versus presenting it to you, it raises suspicion. I'm sorry. The public is intelligent enough. Don't, you know, we're, we're smart people. We can understand it. It shouldn't have to be presented in a special fashion for the public. That's my opinion. I support Mr. Porzarelli's suggestion tonight to bring the interviewing process back to the commissions. This is not a city. It's a township. Commissions are a big part of it. It's been said not only by Joe, but others up there. The commissions are the backbone. For the board to take more control by developing a subcommittee and selecting the members of that subcommittee and taking that away from the commissions, it's not right. It's wrong. You should give the responsibility to the people on these commissions that devote their time. To say, with all due respect, that my deputy clerk is more talented than many of the people on these commissions, I disagree. You've got some very talented people on these commissions that devote their time. They understand the internals of that department as well as you do, or if in many instances, probably even better. So to say that they shouldn't be part of the process, it's not right. That's what commissions are for. That's what the township government is for, and I think that should be given back to them. You have the final say. You're the decision-making process. So whatever they bring to you, you have the final say anyway. So let them do their job. Oh, let's see. And closing on the bridge, yes, I heard Mr. Flavin say a lot of things. I, I'll say this. In your last presentation on the county's delivery of the bridge to us, one of the comments was from Wayne County, "We will not encounter a full closure. We will be able to do the repairs without completely closing the bridge down." That was very comforting to me and many members of this public, and I hope it still stands. With that, I bid you a fine good evening. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob. Now Bob is making his way back to his chair. Thank you, sir.
Jim, in case somebody wants to hold up the meeting, I'll leave quickly so I don't disrupt anything.
All right. Sir, do you have anything to say? All right. That's the end of public comment. And, and, and Mr. Flavin, and Bob, I will have something to say about the bridge in my comments.
Thank you. We will be back at the next meeting to pick up on what you had to say.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Derek, you're, he, he said he doesn't have any. For the first time, I remember, and now you're, you're, all right. We'll move on to our reports. Clerk's report.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. While as the liaison to the Community Recreation Commission, I look forward to working with Derek and the commission in fire, finding a new rec director for our department as soon as we possibly can. In the meantime, I'd like to remind everybody that the 2023 Spring Summer Recreation Guide is available. It was published by Go Big Multimedia and Grozeil Grand. You would have had it delivered straight to your home, but you can find them in various places in the township. We have the Summer Concert Series, Waters Edge Pool, all sorts of activities at, at the golf course and Centennial Farm. So please take part in your community rec. Down to the election, as Joe says, Brian is the expert here, and Brian has some news on our upcoming August 8th election. We have a special election. It has a special ballot, and we are in the process now of recruiting and training poll inspectors for both the live polls and the absentee counting boards, and you can take it from there.
Okay. Yeah, and just a quick election update. Applications for absentee ballots were mailed out a couple weeks ago. We've got about 1,800 back. Those of you that have returned those applications, ballots will be mailed out this week. So please look for, look in your mailbox for ballots this weekend, maybe early next week, depending how quickly they get processed through the post office. If anyone is interested in being a poll inspector, we do have a few spots available still. Just give our office a call. And we always need backups, because people do, things come up, and people do cancel out on us, and we do need to fill those spots. So at least get in your app and... So at least getting your app in now gets you on that list. And I did put the sample ballot up on the overhead, if Mike could throw that up on the screen for everybody. It is just a simple four millage renewals, nothing else on there. It's a one-pager. And that is August 8th, and that's all I've got.
That's it for the clerk's office.
Well, thank you very much. Treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. For, excuse me, for the month of May, Grozeal Township had a total of $27,900,000 invested in various investment vehicles and in other savings accounts. These accounts have generated total interest income of $117,520 with an average interest for the month of 3.67%. The 2023 tax season, pardon me, is right around the corner. Summer tax bills will be mailed out the first week of July and are payable from July 1st through September 14th. Beginning September 15th, late penalty charges will apply. Reminder, all original tax bills are mailed to the property owner at the address on record. Mortgage companies that have requested tax bills will receive a duplicate copy. And if you are a property owner and fail to receive your tax bill, please contact the treasurer's office. And just a reminder that in early June, Wayne County sent out letters to those property owners who failed to pay their 2022 property taxes. A notification will also appear on your 2023 tax bill that's forthcoming regarding those unpaid taxes. If you have any questions on either the Wayne County letter or the notice on your 2023 tax bill, please call the Grozeal Treasurer's office, and we will try to answer your question. I sit on the Airport Commerce Park Commission, have no report. We had, our meeting in June was canceled, and our next meeting is July 17th. And for DPS Commission, our July meeting currently has been canceled.
Is that proposed to be canceled?
Proposed to be canceled, barring work that needs to be addressed by the commission. And as most of you know, road projects are underway. Just a reminder to be careful going through those construction areas, watch out for the flag, the flaggers that are directing traffic around some of the equipment, and that's it for the treasurer's office.
Thank you, David. Kyle.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I sit on the Planning Commission, which meets on an as-needed basis. As of now, there's no immediate Planning Commission meeting scheduled. A couple of things that have been moving, Planning Commission-related. Our Community Development Director, Ross Cuero, is putting together two committees, one to review possible master planning firms that would help us with that process, and another possibly to look at just ordinances that I know have come up in previous meetings. So, so those two things are moving forward, and I will provide updates as they become more certain. Beyond planning issues, I want to bring up three things. The first one, I think relatively simple, but I'm still grateful for. I worked with Derek and was really grateful to work with a concerned resident to put out a recycling information flyer. It was sent out through Code Red. Thank you, Brian, for putting that out there for everyone to see. For me, it's very useful. As I've mentioned to everyone, it's like one of the most common things I see on social media, oh, my recycling got thrown in with my trash, or this or that. So now there's a specific, you know, we had this before, but this one's much clearer, I feel, a specific flyer we can point to, say, hey, did you do all these things in this flyer? And if not, please report it. And that will give Priority Waste, I think, better information to be able to figure out what's happening there, and hopefully get less recycling thrown in trash. This isn't necessarily related, but I had an experience just this last trash period where my recycling got missed. It just got missed, so I just called the 1-800 number. They were great. They said, oh, we have cameras, we'll figure out what happened, why they missed it, and we'll send someone to pick it up. And so it had to be out there for a couple days, but Thursday they did eventually pick up my recycling. That can be tough, I know, because obviously we have raccoons and stuff like that, they can go through it. Thankfully, they didn't while it was out there for those couple days. But anyway, it was a good experience, and I generally have had that good experience reaching out to Priority Waste with complaints like that, but I know that others haven't. So I just wanted to just describe some of that. A couple other things. I'll start with something I mentioned last meeting. Obviously, the former McClough site is right across from us over in Trenton and Riverview. There was a concern I brought up last meeting, and I've looked into more since, and I've honestly just become more concerned about it, not because of the safety issue, but because of the lack of responsibility, I'm going to be saying, that's being taken by Eagle specifically. So very specifically, in 2010, a lot of how this all started, the Riverview-Trenton Railroad ended up contaminating the Maguagan Creek right there, which leads into the Detroit River and other areas. I think a motorcyclist fell into the Maguagan Creek and actually ended up getting burns on his body because of the pollution there. The EPA had to go in, clean up that site, try to bill the Maroon family companies for that. Were only able to get really half of it back. But anyway, work was done by the EPA to kind of make a berm there, and as this new Riverview-Trenton Railroad construction is happening to connect the rail line there, they cut through the berm again that the EPA had to go in and, 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 and clean up. So now that pollution is getting into the Maguagan Creek again and out onto the roadside. I went actually there myself to the roadside, saw where they cut in, saw where this, I believe it's calcium hydroxide, it's a, it's a basic, it's a material that's making the pH much higher. But anyway, just very concerning. MDOT issued a permit for this work, Eagle issued a permit for this work. I still haven't been able to find out who issued those permits, were they correct to issue those permits? Yeah, and I've been reaching out to as many people as I can about it. But I just want to let you know, I'm concerned about what's happening there, and I'm looking into it. Again, I know Joe applied to be on that community advisory group for the McClough Steel Site. I'm grateful for that. We have not gotten any information back on that, but they meet quarterly, so anyway, it's something I'm looking into very deeply. It's something I followed from before I was on the board. But anyway, it's something I'm concerned about. And then finally, I'll talk about Wayne County. I know Jim and maybe, and maybe Derek are going to say something about this, but I will just say, I felt a little embarrassed as a board member, where we were here at the last board meeting, someone asked us about the bridge, and the very next day, they closed it down for an inspection that we didn't know about. You know, it was just, I will just say, that was embarrassing for me as a board member. I know that the county has apologized to officials since then about that, and I've communicated, I don't think the apology should be in private to us as officials, I think it should have been to the public, honestly. The public's the one that got inconvenienced. There's real, there's real consequences that we all know that, not just missed work or appointments, but possible health and other emergency issues that come with that sort of thing that we all know very well. So I'll leave it at that on Wayne County, but I just, I want to communicate that because that was my experience last board meeting. Yeah, you know, I know Wayne County's doing a lot of work for us, putting a lot of investment in this community, I'm grateful for that, but they also got to do better, and on that, I feel like they had to do better. And I'm glad they apologized in private, but I, I don't know if we'll get it, but I just think they should have done that in public to the public of Grozeal. So I'll leave it, I'll leave it there for tonight.
Thank you. Kyle, you're done. Joe?
Good evening. I sit on the Police Commission. They meet third Tuesday of each month, 7:00 PM in this room. I first want to state that we are taking applications for dispatcher, and you can pick up an application at the Police Department, or they are also online on the Police section of the website for Grozeal Township. Also, we've been working on our funding mechanism for the next five years for the Police Department still. We're very serious about that to make sure that the funding is correct, so the personnel level is correct, and you get the service that you deserve out here. Also, just wanted to say, during these power outages in the summertime, obviously, if you don't have a whole-house generator, I don't think any regular generator works the air conditioner. And anybody that needs to get out of the heat, we have a cooling center at the Police Department, Fire Department, we use it as a training room. And, I mean, they even put the TV on for you, and there's a restroom there, drinking fountain, and, but anybody that knows someone, maybe, the elderly, or that you need to check on, and they definitely need to get out of the heat. I know some people get in the car and they go for a ride, or go somewhere and out to eat and so on and so forth, but they, just remember that the training room is open for the public anytime that we do have power outages. So that's it for me tonight. Jim, you're going to go on all the county issues on that meeting we had.
Yeah, you'll, I mean, you correct me if I'm, you know, if I miss something, please speak up.
Oh, okay, go ahead, yeah. Let Supervisor talk on that.
All right, thanks, Joe.
Thank you, I'm good.
Carl.
I had the pleasure of sitting on two commissions. First is the Fire Commission, alphabetical order. I spoke with Chief Camilleri this morning. He indicated that they have had 65 calls to date for the month of June, which makes it the busiest month ever. He's also pleased to report that we have three new members that are pending approval. Those are people that are going to be able to come in and work, try and take some of the burden off of all of the calls that we're getting. 65 works out to about five calls every two days, and those happen 24/7. So we're looking forward to having the three members with their approvals pending. The other thing, and on a personal note, our condolences to the Fire Chief and the loss of his mother, Rose Koval. Many of you undoubtedly are familiar with Rose. She was one of the long-term most successful realtors on Grozeal, and she recently passed. Services were held last Friday, and our condolences on part of the board and the community to John and his entire family. Also sit on the Greenways Open Space Committee, and am pleased to report, when you drive down Meridian, south of Meridian Elementary, you will see flat where wood chips, mounds of wood chips were. My guesstimate was that there was something like 100 yards worth of wood chips there. Those have been spread along the Meridian Trail inside the woods as it moves over and connects with East River. So you will see a much nicer trail. It is not finished yet, it is being groomed, but the wood chips are gone and they've been put to good use. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Carl. Derek, Township Managers' Report.
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor and members of the board. Just a quick, a couple items this evening. A lot of them are going to focus on roadwork, where we're at currently with the work that's being done. West River Road is done with striping and restoration still remaining. Horse Mill is done. Striping and restoration is needed. Church Road, west of Meridian, is complete. Striping and restoration is needed there as well. Bellevue, east of Meridian, the base coat is complete. We are going to be adding Third Street to that project list. We did have some cost underruns when it came to undercutting expenditures that weren't realized under the original contract, so not even touching the contingency, we're able to allocate some additional funds to adding roads. So Third Street will be done while they're in that area, working on Bellevue. East River Road, south of Grozeal Parkway to Manchester, is paved. East River Road, south of Gro is milled. South Point is milled and awaiting surfacing. And one point of clarification, I did notice a couple of residents mentioning that there had been chip sealing done on South Point, that is correct, but there were portions of the road that were not chip sealed. Those are the portions that they milled, not the new chip seal work. So it wasn't a do-over or a disturbance of what was already previously accomplished, as was mentioned by some, and there are actually two very different methods. Chip sealing has been mentioned before as a preventative maintenance item. Milling and resurfacing is actually a resurfacing, just so I just wanted to clarify that. West River Road by the wastewater treatment plant was milled today, as well as the West River Road ramp intersection. South Point and Gro has been milled, and Meridian and Bellevue has been milled, so be careful as you drive on Meridian, it's a 35 mile an hour road, obviously, and that dip is going to come up on you pretty quick, especially after dark, so keep close attention to that. The paving of Park Lane, which is actually a different contractor than the current milling fill work that's being, that's been ongoing, that will start after the 4th now, so that will shorten, happen shortly after the 4th of July. And then we are going to be doing some crack and joint sealing. That will happen probably within the next week or so, that will start, and the majority of that work's going to be focused on the center of the island, and once we get the roads narrowed down, we'll put a push notification out, letting residents know. But I think the majority of the work is going to be in the, in the island area, right off of Meridian, in the subdivisions in there. Some work on ferry going west, we'll be doing crack and joint sealing there, and then also some of the center roads, the residential roads off of Meridian in the middle of the island, so that'll be ongoing probably over the course of about a two-week process. So there was some conversation tonight already about the DTE power outage, and I don't know if the Supervisor, if you want to.
If you're, go ahead.
Just a bit of information.
No, I mean, as long as it's covered, go ahead.
The, the power outage, and Joe, you can probably actually even help out too, was related to a, an issue in the city of Riverview. There was a line that feeds a substation that was damaged. Once that was repaired, the power was restored, but that was the main cause of the issue, was actually something over in Riverview that works to feed the island that was damaged, and as a result, we had that power outage.
Do we know how it got damaged, or?
No, I do not have information as to why it was damaged. And then, as Joe had mentioned, our Police Department is the one that did the push notifications, letting residents know of the cooling station and also the areas that they could go to if they needed emergency power. Our Police Department is operated by an emergency generator when the power is out, so that is your go-to area if you have issues during a power outage. The fuel tanks that were part of the COVID relief allocation are out for bid right now at the Grozeal Public Safety Department. Those bids are due July 27th, and the HVAC here at Township Hall, the specifications are being put together for that work as we speak. And last but not least, I was notified of lane closures on Jefferson and Parkway that the barricades were put out this afternoon. We have a call tomorrow with DTE to understand the full scope of what is all that's going on out there. This is the first that we heard about it, was the barrels being placed there. So when we contacted DTE after we tried to backtrack what that was all about, we first checked with the county, they don't have anything going on there, but what's happening is, I guess, a gas main repair or replacement in that area, and that's why they need those lanes closed, to have the operating area to be able to do that work. So as soon as we find out what the duration of those lane closures is going to be, we'll be sure to let the residents know. We should know after our call tomorrow at 2:00. So that's all I have.
Are those complete closures for all ingress and egress to the island from Parkway?
No. There are two lanes closed, and the northbound lanes as you approach the Parkway intersection off Jefferson, so your right-hand turn lane and the second lane to the right on the northbound lanes, and then the northbound lanes as you cross the intersection going towards Elizabeth Park, that right-hand lane is closed, I'd say probably 250 feet down the road. So it's primarily that northbound, those couple northbound lanes as you turn to the right is probably the biggest impact.
So would that close?
Correct.
So Parkway, Parkway and southbound lanes are open?
Correct, yeah, there's nothing on Parkway, as I'm sure most residents saw today. Yeah, nothing turning left off the island. There is a single lane closure as you turn right off the island, and then turning right off Jefferson onto Parkway, that's the biggest impact. So hopefully, it's a short duration, but we'll know more tomorrow. That's all I have.
Derek, one other thing, and might be worth noting, since a lot of the roadwork is actually being completed, all of the restoration is scheduled for September?
Yes, and that was the initial scheduled restoration work, so it'll probably actually happen sooner than that. This, the schedule's kind of been a moving target because they're moving quicker than what they had originally anticipated.
But the restoration won't immediately follow the roadwork. It's all going to be accumulated till the end.
So in a project like this, you have a prime contractor, and he'll sub out, or they will sub out, a variety of different parts of the project, so, you know, they'll want to have their one subcontractor come through and do it all at once, that's why it all occurs at the end, once all the work is complete. And there are, on a lot of these roads, there are multiple courses, they call them lifts. So what you see, like on Bellevue right now, they'll pave the first inch and a half, and then they'll put a wear course on the, on the second inch and a half. So you have a lip currently, and actually have some water sitting on some of the roads right now. It's because that final course hasn't been put on, it hasn't been leveled, and it hasn't been set for the drainage on the road. So that's why residents might see some drainage issues right now on some of the milled or first course surfaces, so.
All right. Thanks, Derek. A number of things here. First of all, if there- first of all, uh, if there's anyone out there that is having trouble with their internet or wants to put, have some input, uh, the tri-county, uh, area has a survey out there that you can take. I will give you the, uh, website, but I'll also have, uh, give it to Brian to put up. Uh, so you can go on our website and see it. It's, uh, www.michiganmoonshot.org Um, and, uh, it's not a long survey, uh, but basically they want to see in all, in every area, uh, uh, what is your, you know, what is your experience with, uh, with the internet? Uh, because, uh, the, uh, there is a lot of federal money out there that is being given to the states and the counties to improve, uh, improve the, uh, the broadband. So, uh, if, uh, especially if you're having any trouble with yours, uh, I would, I would, uh, uh, take this survey. It will only take about five minutes to do. Um, the, uh, our Trenton Veterans Memorial Library wanted me to remind everybody uh, that they are open for business and, uh, ask you to come in and use your library. If you do not have a library card, you can go down there and get one. Uh, it's free. Uh, and, uh, they have a number of, uh, um, programs, uh, through the summer for children as well as adults, uh, for your enjoyment. Um, the bridge, uh, we did have, uh, Derek and Joe and I sat in on a Zoom meeting this week, uh, this past week with, um, uh, the director of the Wayne County DPS and, and, uh, his engineers. Um, uh, Mr. Flavin brought up, uh, you know, we were told there's not going to be any shutdown, which is, was true. But when they were talking about that, they were talking about doing, just do the work on the five piers. Subsequent to them reopening the bridge, uh, and actually I give them credit for this, they took it upon themselves, uh, to have a, what they was called a scoping inspection. Uh, because they wanted to make sure that the structure itself, even though it was open and all that work had been done on it, they wanted to make sure what else, if anything, do we need to do? Based on that inspection, uh, there will be more work on the structure and not just, not just the work that was brought up in the report, but the, they did a, I mean, this was, uh, 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 a fine-tooth review of that structure. Um, so they have, uh, an engineering company, H&amp;H, that had done that inspection and is now doing the design of the structural repairs that they will do. Uh, along with that, they have a different engineering company, uh, Baker Engineering, who's doing the design of the piers. Both those, both those projects are in design right now. Being that it's a, a government entity, when they get through with the design, they have to, they have to, uh, go out and get specs. They have to bid it out. They're looking, uh, probably to start work, uh, in late 2025. Uh, so, so with it being late 2025, uh, there's, obviously it's going to be, the work is going to go into 2026. There is a possibility of a shutdown because of the structural. So what was, I want, and I want to make this clear because I don't want people coming back and saying Wayne County said no shutdown. That was for the piers. Uh, and, uh, but since they're going to do the structure, they want to do them all together. Not structure first and then, then the piers. So they'll be trying, and, 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 and again, this is all trying to do it. Uh, we don't have any definite dates. We don't, you know, they're in the design stage. So we don't have, uh, we don't have solid, uh, specs on it or anything like that. But they are working on it and I truly believe that they're, uh, they are looking into our best interest. Um, uh, I have also had, uh, discussions with our state senator and representative, uh, as well as Wayne County, uh, and there is an interest to start getting going on and possibly a design for a new bridge for Grozeal. Uh, and I think that's very important that we start it now, uh, um, uh, because it's a long, long process. Uh, so we don't want to wait five, 10 years down the road to start. Uh, hopefully we can get something started, uh, uh, now. I know we talked about it when, when the bridge was down and we were reopening it, there was talk about it. And it, it, uh, kind of fell by the wayside. I have been, uh, nudging these people, let's say, uh, to, uh, to get together and, uh, um, I just, within the last two weeks have talked to Jamie Churches. And, uh, today I talked to Darren Camilleri. Uh, I've talked to, uh, the Wayne County officials. Everybody's in favor of that. So, um, it looks like I'm going to put it together, even though we are, we are on the lowest rung there. Uh, but it has to be done and I'm going to push through on that. Um, uh, so that's where we are with, uh, with that. Uh, there, there aren't a lot of details right now, but there's a lot going into what they are going to do. Uh, um, you know, and the first step is the design. Uh, and, uh, I was told, uh, previously that like each pier is a separate design. It's not a one design for all. It depends on the pier. So, uh, um, that's, that's why it takes time. Uh, so, uh, that's where we're going on that. Um, uh, as far as the rest of our projects on Grozeal, uh, they all seem to be moving, and I'm talking Wayne County projects on Grozeal, the bridges and, and, uh, there will be paving a Meridian Road once they get the Meridian Bridge in. Uh, they're looking to do the Swan Island Bridge, Still is On and Ferry Road Bridge and Elba. And, uh, uh, our, our, again, uh, we, we have a, a problem with the Park Lane Bridge. Uh, Wayne County had bundled that bridge with six others in the county asking for funding. They did not get the funding, so they're back to square one as to funding for that bridge. Uh, but, uh, it's not falling off the table and we're pressing. Uh, and, uh, um, with the, with the money that's out there from the, coming down from the federal government for different things, where, uh, I know our, our representatives are trying to get money also. So they're aware of not only the Parkway Bridge, but, uh, quite specifically the Park Lane Bridge, uh, because it's been sitting and, and we do want to get it done one way or another. So, uh, Joe, did I miss anything?
Um, just one thing. Do you recall, uh, when we spoke to Sammy, um, the head of bridges, the length of time he, they forecasted?
They did not forecast the time that I re, I remember, and I don't think they'll, they'll know.
Did I hear approximately nine or was that something, another? Uh, and maybe I could be wrong. I'm just asking you guys.
I, I, I didn't recall a, a specific time because I don't know how they could come up with a time before they know what they're doing, which would be the design and the bids. Uh, but they did talk about a potential closure because of it.
That's what I mean, but I thought he said approximately nine months or so to do the whole.
Well, and, and he, uh, uh, actually it was six, could be six months, maybe he said six to eight.
Yeah, I heard him.
But it was, it's speculative and I hate to, hate to actually even say that because it's speculative at this point. Uh, but there certainly is a chance for a closure down the road, uh, probably in 2026. Uh, because if they start, they figured with the bidding and everything, they wouldn't be able to actually start work until the end of 2025. Well, uh, that's, I don't see that as being closed down work. Uh, it would be, uh, in that, uh, spring probably if it were to happen. But it's, I, I, I even hate to bring it up because it's still speculative. They don't know what it will be. But, uh, that is out there. Um, okay. Uh, that's for Kyle.
Kind of out of order here, Jim, but may I ask questions or say anything just about the bridge or anything? Or should I wait till next meeting for that one?
Well, uh, if it's quick, you can. I still have a little more to say myself.
Okay, I'll wait, I'll wait till next meeting.
Oh, okay. All right. And I know, uh, and one of the things I want to talk about is the apology from Wayne County. Uh, that was a screw-up within their communications division. Uh, you know, it kind of a one guy thought the other guy was putting it out and it didn't get out. It's a mistake and they owned up to it. They didn't, you know, they didn't push back or anything like that. They just flat out owned up to it. And we, probably the best way really to get it out is for us to tell the people that they apologized. Uh, um, there, I mean, I know there's other ways of doing it, but I guarantee people aren't going on their website or even our website to see that. So probably us telling is the best way, uh, but they were apologetic and they took full blame for it. Um, uh, speaking of apologies, I want to apologize to the public. And, and in fact, I want to apologize to Mr. Flavin for, for my getting feisty with him tonight. But I am telling you, I am absolutely tired of people making accusations without anything to back it up, either against me personally or this board. Uh, I don't know of anybody on this board that tries or does do anything wrong on purpose. And, uh, I'm, I'm tired of the accusations without anything to back it up. Uh, one thing that I will say about these people that make these accusations, not one of them comes down and talks to us to try and find out what's going on. They do it out of perception. And, and if you can do it out of perception, say, "My perception is..." Don't say it is fact because it's just wrong to do that, but I apologize for my outburst. And lastly, and something really good, um, I had the pleasure of going to the groundbreaking for the new luxury apartments in Southgate, uh, the, the old security bank building, which will now be called the Bank Tower. Uh, I was, uh, I was, uh, invited to go to that. The, the presentation of what they're going to do is, is really great. That building is the largest building between Detroit and Toledo. So, uh, it, it is eye-catching. Um, uh, and what they're going to do with it is eye-catching. Um, they're, the, the top apartments will be two-story apartments where they have HVAC now and everything. They're going to knock all that out, put glass up there. It'll be two-story apartments up there uh, with a view, uh, that should be spectacular. Um, down in the lobby, they're knocking out the floor. They're going to put in a glass floor and you're going to be able to look down into the old vault. They're keeping the vault and, uh, the, um, security, uh, the safety deposit boxes. Um, the people that are doing it have been in, it's a family business, but they've been in this business for a long time, have done projects like this, uh, all over. And, uh, so it's not their first time. Uh, and, uh, quite frankly, the developer was, happened to be driving through the Down River area, drove by that and said, "Wow, you know, I think I can do something with it." And that's how that started. And it started a couple of years ago, actually, the planning. But, uh, they're, uh, uh, working closely with the county and, uh, and of course the city. And, uh, it's going to have a public park around it, which is really interesting. Uh, there'll be pickleball, there'll be exercise areas, there'll be putting greens, all open to the public, not for the apartment dwellers, but for the public. And pretty much that'll all be on the Trenton roadside. And the parking for the apartments will be west, uh, east of that. Um, and then, uh, the, uh, one of the piers to be a really neat feature, there will be a lighted, I mean, a highly lighted bridge going over Trenton Road to connect the Kiwanis Park with this other park. So, uh, it's, it's something the Down River area hasn't seen, uh, and, uh, it should be very nice. And, uh, the best part is I believe they hope to be open for business, uh, the 20, end of 2025. So it's an aggressive, uh, do, but I think they have things in place where they can get it done. So with that, I end. Kyle, did you want to say anything else? With that, uh...
Like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.